Good evening and welcome to the June 9th, 2022 Council Meeting for Longview. Tonight, Councilman Tim Carpenter is out of town, but state law allows members to participate in the meeting virtually, and we're glad he's able to participate with us tonight. So, as you proceed on, our prayer and pledge will be led by members of the Longview Boys Baseball Aid and Under All-Stars. I want to congratulate all the players and coaches for all their hard work and practice up to this point, and I want to wish them well on their upcoming season, which starts tomorrow. Please rise.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us here today. Thank you for guiding us through the hard times. Please be with all of us as we, as we, I'm sorry. Thank you for being with us as we, um, I'm so sorry. As we represent the city of Longview, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, little man, thank you for the prayer, and don't worry about that. I stutter way more than that, and I have it written right out in front of me. So you did a great job, and I want to congratulate you guys and girls, and I hope you all have a great tournament. Come home with a trophy, come back and see us with a trophy, we'll take another picture, okay? Good luck to y'all. If anybody was gonna leave, I'd have made them stay till the end. We'll do the prayer and the pledge at the end of the meeting next time. We'll wait just a second. Okay, we're now to our scholarship presentations. This is our seventh year to offer scholarships to graduating seniors from Longview's four public school districts to continue their education. And I tell you, every year, I am blown away by the quality of the essays that are submitted. The issue is no different. I want to thank everyone who applied for the scholarships, and today we're delighted to recognize the four scholarship winners and hear their award-winning essays, which answers the question, what will it take for you to be successful in today's world? I think you all are gonna agree when you hear these essays that our future is bright. These children, I call them children because they're still so young to me, their minds are so pure, and I hope they always stay that way. Y'all are just amazing in what you write and what comes out of your, the pen, but the pen speaks from what you're thinking, and that comes from your heart. So, what a blessing to us all. So we will start with Carolyn Hale from Halsville.
In order for me to succeed in today's world, it will take a combination of tenacity for my dreams while being fearless of the word no. These attributes, along with the support of my family and friends, are what have carried me to my success in high school and what will continue to serve me in my future. Dreams are what fuels success. Without goals or aspiration, it is like going on a road trip with no destination. Having goals are the reminders of why the journey was started. To continue to succeed, I will need to constantly be striving towards something. Having this clear vision gives me the ability to not let go even when times get tough. In today's world, there will constantly be challenges to overcome. Any student who experienced high school and COVID can say life did not go as planned. However, even when the world gets turned upside down, having a goal in mind can serve as an anchor. My favorite phrase is, prepare for the worst and expect the best, because it highlights that hard work is always important and the realization that everything does not always go according to plan and while also maintaining hope. When I envision applying that philosophy to my life, it entails optimistically planning a Plan B. Things not going as planned is not always a negative thing, and trying new things can sometimes open a window. Throughout my four years of high school, I have juggled numerous sports clubs and academics. I found myself way more involved than I could ever expect because of the role I made for myself my freshman year. If my only reason for not doing something was because I was afraid of rejection, I would make myself sign up. While I did not receive everything I enrolled in, I achieved way more than I thought possible. Self-doubt is the biggest weakness because it prevents individuals from reaching their full potential. Especially now in the world of social media and people constantly judging, criticism is unavoidable. In order to succeed, it will take me embracing that the answer will not always be yes. Many times at cross-country meets, I would step up on the line at a big Dallas meet and feel like I did not belong. However, my fear of embarrassment and refusal to give up would fuel me. Because of this, I would often PR and place. However, it importantly taught me to keep showing up even when self-doubt told me not to. Once the fear of rejection is no longer present, today's world loses its power to prevent achievement. To succeed in today's world, it will require me to ignore doubt, embarrassment, and fear, and listen to those that believe and love me, like my family. While life never gets easier, the lessons I've learned in high school will provide a strong foundation for my future. As long as I remember where I came from and where I am headed, there is very little that life can throw at me that will prevent me from reaching my goals. Thank you.
Carolyn, Carolyn, come on up here. What an incredible essay. Come up here. Before we can start, I'll present each recipient with a little certificate, but also Sharonda Baker from Walmart, so graciously every year provides a little gift for each of the scholarship applicants, so this is from Walmart and Sharonda Baker. So wonderful essay, there's no telling where you're gonna go in life, I'm so proud of you.
Hello, my name is, hello. My name is Joshua Sanders, I'm from Longview High School, and today I'll read y'all my Dr. Seuss once said, "Why fit in when you're born to stand out?" People have a picture of what an able-bodied person should look like, but it is an ill-conceived perception. From the time I was a child, I had obstacles. I was pre-accepted to a Montessori school prior to birth. After I was born, the school drew my acceptance based on my physical limitations. My parents were told I could not attend unless I could walk without assessing devices. I was enrolled at another area preschool where my parents were told I would require a nurse to be with me throughout the day. However, I was able to do all the daily activities that other kids could do. Finally, a highly regarded preschool accepted me with no questions asked. When I showed up to class in a wheelchair, my parents were told I had a two-week trial and would likely need to find another school. The dean called on day two of the trial asking my parents for forgiveness. She said, "Your teacher's, your son's teacher has stated that he is more able-bodied than any child in this class." I say this because in life, it is easy to judge a book by its cover. I believe all people are capable of that mistake. This event has aided me to propel myself towards success despite my physical limitations and to strive to be my best. The road I've traveled has taught me perseverance, work ethic, and grace towards others, all of which I believe it takes for an individual to achieve success in today's world. Growing up in Longview, I was taught things that I may not be taught in the classroom. I was taught to respect those around me, to listen to the wisdom of those elder to me, but at the same time, to challenge myself to be innovative in my ideas. I believe that this city has come a long way in the last decade, but imagine where it could go. I plan to teach others by my example that despite any limitation, anyone can make a difference. Those who know me do not see a person with a disability but as a friend, a student, a family member, a hard worker, a person who says what he says he will do, a person of integrity, and someone who chooses to highlight abilities, not disabilities. Learning is something that I hope will flourish and continue to develop for the rest of my life. I have a passion for business, I plan to work in a finance department and do real estate on the side. Longview is my home, and the connections made here are lasting. The funds from this scholarship will allow me to gain the business and finance skills that will cascade into the community through jobs I plan to create post-graduation. I want to help the community and students like myself. With financial support, my dreams can be one step closer to reality.
Awesome job, my friend. Awesome. That's for you. Thank you. Bradley's coming in. I might be taller, but you're way bigger than I am, my friend. Great job, great job. Pretty amazing. Next we have Cambry Salser from Pine Tree.
In today's world, everything is so fast-paced, and in time is a precious resource, often very hard to come by. This drought of extra time highlights the vitality of time management, because we as a society need to do better at carving out our schedules in order to focus on things that will ultimately boost our productivity, but this can be incredibly difficult. Where do we draw the line between success and overextension? What do we need to focus on to be at peak success? I think the answer is different for every single person, but there are three key precepts in which can focus to initiate this productive frame of mind. To be successfully, successful mentally, personally, and vocationally in today's busy world, it is necessary to fake it until you make it, to eat the frog, and to find your why. Foremost is the concept of faking it till you make it, which is how I force myself to get outside of my comfort zone so that I am able to challenge myself to grow. This is a way to hijack negative self-talk in my life in order to prove to myself that I can be the person I want to be. Every time I attempt something new, I always, every single time, feel super unqualified that I won't be able to accomplish this goal. This is why every time I have to interrupt it with a fake it until you make it mindset. You have to force yourself into new situations by telling yourself that you belong there. In a new job, act as if you belong. People respect that confidence, and as a result, you will belong. Act like the person you want to be, and one day you will be that person. Second, success comes from eating the frog, which simply means to accomplish your hardest goal or task first. This adage is something my mother taught me that I feel I will hold on to as I begin adulthood. It is something so simple, yet so overlooked. It interrupts the desire to do your easiest things first, which initially seems good until you realize how much left you have to do. By eating the frog, one can very easily eliminate the stress and anxiety of large projects because there is no need to worry about something that's finished. It helps future time management because the temptation of procrastination is now gone. When I don't follow this principle, I unfortunately get very behind and wish I had taken that first step to getting ahead. And I feel like everyone can adopt this idea to discover a more productive version of themselves. The third principle is the most important of the three. It's to find your why. Essentially what this means is you have to focus on your end goal and grasp onto it so tightly that you won't forget why you're doing this. What are you doing this for? One can only have, one can have the best intentions, but if there's no motivation or driving force driving these intentions, they won't go anywhere. They'll stay intentions. Toxic thoughts of giving up can easily take hold when there isn't anything anchoring you to a goal. I learned this goal through one of my favorite workout trainers. Before any workout program, she encouraged those participating to find the reason they wanted to work out. Was it for health or to prove yourself to yourself, but whatever it was, it had to be so important to you that you would never want to give up. You remember the thing that inspired you to take that initial first step. It's what will hold your hand and pull you to the home stretch. There's a quote I once heard that fits this perfectly. People will work for a what, will give their lives for a why. I have adopted this into other aspects of my life, and it's really helped me to organize and reevaluate what is important to me. It has inspired me to take better care of myself so that I can be a better, healthier adult version of my old self. It's a great way to organize motivation so that your life is more like a journey instead of a string of meaningless tasks. Finding your why is vital to personal success, which I believe wholeheartedly can pave the path to success. While everyone sees success in how to achieve it differently, these three goals and ideas can help anyone accomplish their unique aspirations. By utilizing this trio, time management becomes easier, unnecessary stress and anxiety are lessened, and feeling more accomplished is more feasible. Faking it until you make it, eating the frog, and finding your why sound very cliche sometimes, but if you truly try them for yourself and work very hard on them every single day, you will be one step closer to being the best, most successful version of yourself, because it's the small actions that jumpstart monumental growth.
Here's from Walmart. I think Cambry is the first repeat family member I've had in seven years. I think your brother had this a couple of years ago, I believe. Good deal, we're proud of you, honey, you did a great job, always. And we have Landon Coe from Spring Hill.
It is a common misconception that success is attained only by those who are gifted academically or blessed with a unique skill set. I believe, however, that ensuring my success requires more, including a personal responsibility for my community as well as a passion for leading those around me. Practicing responsibility is a primary action to make certain my future will be filled with high achievement and satisfaction. This trait would be especially useful in my college years, as I will be balancing aerospace engineering classes, various clubs and organizations, and a job. Such a busy schedule can sound overwhelming, however, surrounding myself with supportive community members would benefit me more than any diploma or award ever could. Success is not only found through physical achievements, but in the people I have impacted and who will impact me in return. In my senior year of high school, I was voted into office as student-bodied president of the Spring Hill class of 2022. The title itself was an honor, but the true privilege was the multiple volunteer opportunities presented to me along the way with this position. It may sound cliche, but aiding the citizens of Longview through our senior citizens program and leading recycling campaigns to make our city more sustainable, but get merit of higher regard. As previously mentioned, natural talent eventually reaches a threshold. I hope to never experience this limit, continuing to pursue new opportunities for leadership and development in my free time. I worked several jobs during my youth in Longview, and I met many wonderful people along the way who have helped me in my journey as an aspiring engineer. Dedication and aptitude may get me through the door, but finding and aiding a community like ours here in Longview will seal it behind me, opening new opportunities for the future ahead. Thank you.
Great job, man. Give your certificate. Great job, man. Wonderful essay. All four of y'all, come on up, we have to get a group picture. It's good, Sean?
Oh, it's good.
If we could all be so wonderfully minded. And I just want to thank Sharonda Baker once again with Walmart. You know, Sharonda brings these gifts and tips to us before I even tell her when the scholarship is done, so she's awesome. And I want to thank Kristin Shahar for donating her stipend as well as I do for the scholarship funds that are given to these young people. So thank you all very much, and thank you, Kristin. We are now to, everybody, okay, citizen comment, I do have a few speaker cards. Cameron Ferguson.
All right, when do I start?
You have to state your name and your address, please.
My name is Cameron Eric Ferguson, and I live at 1900 South Green Street.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I'm good to go?
You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Cameron Ferguson, a pastor, a church here in Longview, Texas, Valor Baptist Church, and I'm disgusted and horrified that here in Longview, Texas, which is supposedly part of the Bible Belt, we had a live-out-loud gay family pride event this past weekend. The Bible is very clear in Proverbs 8:13, "The fear of the Lord is to hate evil, pride, and arrogance." So we should be hating pride, right, events, and not celebrating them. Proverbs 16:5 says, "Everyone that is proud in heart is an abomination to the Lord." So if you are a proud person, God hates you. Being prideful is not something God wants. God wants us to humble ourselves, and being in a supposedly Christian nation and making the proclamation, "In God we trust," how about we humble ourselves and see how God feels about homosexuality? Leviticus 20:13 says, "If a man also lie with mankind as he lieth with a woman, both of them have committed an abomination; they shall surely be put to death." So we see that God issues capital punishment against the homosexual. And in the New Testament, in Romans Chapter 1, the Bible reiterates this sentiment and says that homosexuals, and I quote, "are worthy of death." That's in Romans Chapter 1. And also in Romans Chapter 1, the Bible calls homosexuals vile, calls them vile. So we see that homosexuality to God is a sin worthy of capital punishment. If we were actually a godly city here in Longview, we would not allow these vile, disgusting perverts to gather and celebrate their wickedness, especially in a way that includes children, innocent children, in a way that includes these innocent children, and it perverts their mind to think that homosexuality is okay and normal when it's a death style. It's a death style, it's unnatural, and it goes against nature, the Bible says. In the Bible, when a land has an actual godly leader, an actual godly leader, we see it time and time again that homosexuals are removed out of the land, they're removed out of the land, not praised and allowed to gather around innocent children perverting their innocent minds. And that's what you, that's what you all have allowed here with this gay pride event that just took place. So if Longview really loved children, we would ban these sodomites from gathering and celebrating their abominable gay pride, which God hates, and we would stop allowing them to corrupt and recruit children in this area into their vile death style. And homosexuality also raises health concerns. The vast majority of AIDS and HIV cases are spread through these filthy, disgusting perverts, and they, and they corrupt our community with, with public health. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Nelson.
How's it going, everyone? My name's Michael Nelson, 705 Stewart Street, right off of, right in between Harrison Road and Loop 281. We get a lot of traffic, and that's why I'm here, because we have problems on Stewart Street. I've been living there for about five years, and it's been a struggle. It has got better, but better's not good enough, okay? So I gotta get right to some of these key issues that, you know, my family and I, we would like to tell the council and the mayor. All right, well, I, to slow down traffic, I bought a green child from Home Depot that holds up a flag, okay? And repeatedly, this green man is stolen out of my yard. I get him caught on camera every time, call the police, send a video, and that's the end of it, but it keeps happening. They keep targeting this green child, I don't know why, but it's a hot item, and that's one thing, the theft on the property is bad. Traffic is bad in the mornings, it's so bad that my wife, she's late to work a lot of times. She could spend 15 minutes sitting in the driveway because the traffic is so bad piled up in the morning. Same thing in the evenings, four, five o'clock, traffic piles up, and it's terrible, you can't even get out. There's blatant disrespect from drivers, throwing out trash on a daily basis, beer bottles is common, so that leads me to believe that there's drinking and driving going on on the street. When I, when I do yard work, I have speeders that speed right past me, and I could feel the air blow right past me, and I'm just like, that's not right. They know better, they should slow down, you know, at least a little bit of respect. Dog wonders in the street almost got hit, neighbor child ran out in the street the other day, someone had to slam on their brakes to prevent them from obviously hitting a child. Large 18-wheeler squeezing down the street, coming close to hitting parked vehicles. And I like to grow sunflowers, and I have, a lot of people stop by and buy them, but there's a couple guys that they like to chop them down. All right, so I got people chopping down sunflowers, trash cans get put out, people running over trash cans, call the police on that, they got the incident numbers. And eggs thrown in the yard, looking inside the mailbox, there are some slurs being used, you know, I can handle it, but my wife and my kids, you know, I'm trying to protect, and they don't feel safe going outside in the front yard because they get looks. And we did a little look, and there's a lot of offenders around us, so that got me a little nervous because they're looking at my daughters, and they don't feel comfortable in the front yard. My guests can't even come over because they, they don't know where to park, because when they get out their cars, they have to worry about getting hit.
Sir, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Ooh, that went quick, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Marcus Hall.
How you doing, people? My name is Marcus Hall, I stay at 705 Goff Chris Drive, former 237. I have two things I want to speak on today. For one, my apartment complex, Seneca Pines, we haven't had AC in almost, in some, in some cases, in some apartments over a year. In my apartment, it's been like four months, and they still, they're still charging late fees, evicting folks, and it's like they're taking their time by fixing it. by fixing the AC. We haven't even gotten to the dog days of summer yet, and it's already like, I come, it's cooler outside than it is in my apartment. I come here from work, and I'd rather sleep in the car than sleep in my apartment. And I just feel that, I don't know who to speak to upon that, or how to go about initiating that with the apartment people about they need to compensate us some way about the lack of time we spent without the AC. Then another thing I have agendas with is the, none of the studio parents on child support, as far as me, a single father. I have one that stays with me, and I have three others with my ex-wife. And I find it hard for me to express my visitation and legal rights as a single father, as far as with my ex-wife, because every time I go to do something, they always tell me to get a lawyer. I don't, I can't afford a lawyer because, you know, I mean, because child support and rent and take care of my other ones and everything like that. And it's like, I haven't seen my kids in two months, and I'm not a baby daddy, I'm a father, you know, so I actually try, I try, put forth effort and everything. And I just, I'm just trying to see, trying to find a better loop, a better, get a better system, get a system going about that to help fathers that are actually trying. I know there's some fathers out here that don't care, but for me, that's actually trying. Trying to find a better system than always just go get a lawyer. They want to charge $400 just to sit down and talk to you, you know, and I can't afford it. And that's all I came to speak to y'all upon today. Thank you for your time, and y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. I have one more speaker card, Jeff Goodman, but is that just for zoning?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I have no more speaker cards, so we will move on to our public safety update. Chief Boone is out this evening, but he recorded an update for us earlier this week, so we will hear Chief Boone's update first. Is that correct, Sean? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. McPhee, thank you for allowing this video recording tonight since I will not be present in person, and let's talk about our public safety update. Let's go over some May stats first. We had on our priority one calls for service, this is our in-progress calls. Our response time, and again, response time is from the time the call is created to when the first officer arrives on scene, was 3 minutes and 28 seconds. Very proud of that time. Also, we responded to 5,755 calls for service during the month of May. That averages out to about 185 calls per day. And on our traffic stops, we had 2,483 traffic stops, which averages out to about 80 traffic stops per day. And as you can see there, we had an increase of 355 traffic stops from the month of April. And we had 30 DWI cases during the month of May. We're going to continue our operation Pump the Brakes. We're continuing to work the loop and other busy intersections, looking for red light runners and speeders, and if anyone's attempting any drag racing or anything else. This is our increase that you see from our main numbers is attributed to our Pump the Brakes operation. Also, this last week, we had, the McDonald's on Estes Parkway had its grand opening, and they invited the police department to come there. And we sent Police Area Representative LaDarian Brown to step in there and partake in their grand opening.
Yes, Chief Boone, you've been replaced by Officer Mack. I'm sorry, but there he is. Look, he's here. He's reporting for duty.
And Officer Mack is now in the chief's office. Also, on May 30th, we had the Memorial Day event at T Park, a day of thanks and remembrance. I want to thank the Parks Department and Longview Fire Department for assisting us with this operation. And we had the governor come in. It was a great event, a great attendance, and we were very proud to be part of that. First responders were recognized at that, along with all of our military and our military veterans. Also, this week, we've had Lieutenant Rocket. He is down at Uvalde, Texas, as a peer counselor, assisting the Law Enforcement Management Institute of Texas. And at the time of this viewing, he will be back in Longview, but we're definitely proud of the work he did this past week in Uvalde. Also, this week, our team police academy has begun, and we have 23 students in there, teenagers, that are learning what it is to be a police officer and more about the law enforcement community and the law enforcement career. So, definitely excited to have those students with us. Also, we have our citizens on patrol. If that is something you're interested in, if you want to go out on patrol as a citizen, not a full-fledged police officer, but still want to participate with us, we have a contact number there for Brandon Thornton, 903-237-2716. Please contact him and find out what it takes to become part of our COP program. And we're still looking for qualified police officers. If you're looking for a new career, or if you're fresh out of school and want an opportunity, please apply with the Longview Police Department. We'd love to have you as part of our team. Thank you very much. I will be back in the office Monday, and I'll return back to town late Friday evening. I am actually attending a college orientation with my son at Louisiana Tech in Ruston, Louisiana. So, I appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, even though I can't answer them in person, please reach out to me, shoot me an email, and I will get back with you as soon as possible. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chief Boone. That was almost like he was there. It's kind of weird looking at the screen. Chief Stillman, oh, he is here. Okay.
I feel like I shouldn't be. Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. McPhee. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to update you on some activities that the fire department has undertaken since our last council meeting. As Chief Boone mentioned in his presentation, the event, the Memorial Day event at T Park was stellar. It was by far one of the most exciting events I think I've got to be a part of in my tenure with the fire department. Just the teamwork and the coordination, as Chief Boone mentioned, behind the scenes between fire, police, public works, and the Parks Department to help do a lot of activity that people didn't realize that it took to pull that event off was just spectacular, and I appreciate being, getting to be a part of that and working with all those other fine city employees to help be the facilitators of some of those activities. And several of you guys were out there, and just the day, just the excitement of the day, anytime that we can stop and honor our veterans, you know, I made a comment at the last council meeting that those are the people that I consider heroes to myself. I've got family members that have been in the military. I've got several employees that are currently serving in the military, and anything that we can do to show them support just makes our city a better place to live. Our fire department actually had the opportunity to set up a recruiting booth, made a lot of personal contacts, a lot of good conversations to sell future careers in the fire service. One of the more exciting things that we got to do was take some of our water rescue guys out there and get kids riding the boat around the pond there at T Park. And hopefully, we were successful in recruiting some future members for our water rescue team. So, I'll let this play for just a minute so you can see them take off and get out of there. Nobody fell out of the boat. It was a good day. It's amazing living in an urban city like Longview, how many children have never been in a boat. You know, they've been to the park, they fished off the side of the bank, but they've never in their life been in a boat, and so, opportunities like this, we're happy to get to be a part of that and just get a smile on their face. Lot of fun. And moving on beyond that, and this is really the last thing that I have, I want to reach out and just appreciate Councilwoman Gumboa for coming and spending a couple of hours with us earlier this week at the fire department. We got to do a lunch visit session with her as part of her new council member orientation. Lot of good conversation, and we really had a good time with that. So, thank you for taking the time out of your day to spend just a couple of hours with us, and we look forward to doing that more in the future. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Stillman? Good job, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel, as I mentioned earlier, Councilman Carpenter is joining us virtually tonight. So, to accommodate the broadcast and proceedings, we will conduct business a little bit different. We will vote according to a show of hands. Also, please raise your hand to make a motion as well. If Tim needs to speak, he'll also need to raise his hand to be recognized. If for some reason we lose connection with Tim, we will continue the meeting without him. Also, let's please be mindful to avoid talking over each other to ensure Tim can hear everything that is being said. Okay? Thank you all. We are now to discuss items, discuss concerning potential funding sources for the Longview Amphitheater proposal. Mr. McPhee.
Thank you, Mayor. City council, at the May 26 city council meeting, I was tasked with identifying potential funding options for the $12 million proposal for the amphitheater that was presented at a previous meeting. I had some conditions placed upon me during that, and that the potential funding options cannot affect city services, it cannot affect a tax increase, and it cannot call for a bond. With that in mind, I offer the following slide and the summation of the information. I thought it was easiest to go back to the audited year-end fund balance that was last audited, which was the end of fiscal year '21, and that amount was $20.6 million, which is before you on the slide, which is approximately 12.69 above the required 10% minimum reserve. I wanted to offer the following preliminarily, that during this fiscal year FY '22, we anticipate ending the year with surplus revenues and reduced expenditures due to vacancies, somewhere between $2 and $4 million, which will further increase our reserve fund at the end of this fiscal year. And that concludes the remarks that I have prepared for you, council.
Counsel, discussion on this item for Mr. McPhee?
Yes, I can't. I think we need to, I think we need to sit down as a council and have a work session on this and talk about this. Outlaying just $12 million without a whole lot of input from my constituents, I've had a few of them that have talked to me, and they've all been against it. And we've got a huge amount of surplus here. I know where the money came from. Some of the other people up here know where the money came from, and I think we have better areas that we could use that money in right now. The economy is not looking all that great. Things are costing a lot more, and I think it would be prudent for us to sit down and discuss this as a council in a work session and talk this out. We have not had a chance to do that yet. We've got a presentation given to us at the end of the last meeting. The mayor said, "Hey, we're gonna let the city manager find us $12 million to fund this with," and now we opened it up to talk about. I'm not comfortable with that. The people that have contacted me so far have not been comfortable with that. And that's, I can't support it right now unless we have a session on it and we can sit down and talk about it. The other thing is, if we're going to spend this kind of money, I think we ought to put it out there for a vote. And we've got to let the citizens vote on this, because the last time this happened, my understanding was, I wasn't on the council, that was with the animal shelter. And there's been a lot of positive and a lot of negative on that. And there's a lot of questions that Mr. Carpenter put out there, and some of them have been answered and some of them hadn't. Number seven bothers me a lot. We could have a deficit of half a million dollars, I mean, $500,000, or a profit of $200,000. We don't know. I personally know the people that presented this, I think very, 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 very highly of those folks, and to give them justice, I would like to sit down and visit with them some on it, maybe have them visit with us on it, and present this to us as a council,
Yes, anyone, feel free to speak. I'm not here to address anyone's specific concerns. That's not, if they're directed at me, I'll be happy to respond to those. If they're not directed at me, then you all can do your own thing. But having a work session, you can have as much of a work session as you want. The problem with the work sessions is those are just us, and the public's not involved. I thought this was what it was for, was to discuss this tonight, to discern what your concerns were in open session so that the public is aware of what's going on. That's what discussion item means. There's nothing going to be decided tonight. We're so far from that area of taking kind of a position on that. What I was trying to accomplish is, could we even continue discussing it? Because if Mr. McPhee was not able to come up with a reasonable funding solution, then this proposal would die like the others have in the past, where we didn't have the money to do it. So, all my intention was to see, is the money available? And if it is, is it prudent to spend it in this fashion? And so, that's what we're doing, is discussing this right now. So, feel free to discuss your concerns. That's what discussion item means. Ms. Naughty?
Well, I mean, of course, we all, good evening, everyone. I'm sorry. I think we all have very serious concerns. $12 million is a lot of money. You know, I know I too came in on the council when you guys were dealing with the animal shelter, and I know what an issue it was. And to take this seat, and we partially get the blame for some of it, although we were not here, I would hate to think that anyone coming in after us would have to deal with the same type situation should we make a decision to move forward with this. I think having more, and I understand where you're coming from, of speaking more intimately about it as a council, it would give us an opportunity to vet exactly what we're feeling. We have to be good stewards of the city's monies, and those are things we need to discuss. That $12 million is a lot of money. Can it be spent differently? Should we utilize that money in that way? Those are things that need to be discussed. That's kind of where I am on it. I think we should extend the conversation a little bit more.
Agreed. Mr. Finley, I'm just curious, could you even put this for a vote? I don't think this is a statute you can vote on, is it?
You can't do a general proposition, but you have to find a authorization within a statute that would authorize it. I mean, that's something we could look into. There's a lot of sections that deal with this thing, so there's a possibility that there's a section that we could call an election, but you couldn't just say, "I have a general proposition."
Do you support it or not support it? You can't just go out like that.
It'd have to be tied to a specific law, and there are various laws that we could look into to see if that would fit within that.
Yeah, because I don't know that we could do it unless we made some form of, as you say, some kind of stipulation where we can...
Yeah, well, there's, I mean, there's all sorts of special districts and venues that we may could get into that provide election coverage, but, you know, I think that's going to take some, to know more about the proposal and all that, and, you know, any work session and stuff. We'd do that in an open session. It'd be posted and all that as well, too.
Right. Very good.
And, you know, Andy, I believe that, me personally, I think it's a great idea. I would love to see it happening, but we just need to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's.
Because in reality, this money that we're talking about, that our city manager posted us, is basically money that we have that, I mean, as a business council, we would spend on a one-time expense. You would never spend reserve money on a recurring expense because you couldn't sustain that in your next budget cycle. So, this is basically CIP money, is what it is. You can spend it on CIP projects, you can spend it on an amphitheater, you can spend it on whatever you want, but it needs to be one-time expenses because otherwise, you're handcuffing yourself for future budgets, and then we can't sustain it, which is different from the animal shelter. The animal shelter was not a one-time expense. We have continued expenses every year with the animal shelter because of operation maintenance, which we're responsible for, which is different than the amphitheater, which we would not have any operation or maintenance obligations to. So, there's some differences there, but this is just CIP money, is what it is. And so, we can decide where we think it's best to spend CIP money, and if you think that this, if you can spend it better, let's find a way to spend it better, or in another opportunity. Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Go ahead.
So, I pose that same question when you do look at this as CIP money. You know, when has this city taken CIP money and invested that in South Longview? That amount of money, and in an area that deserves this type of money and deserves this type of influence, it's never happened before. And, yeah, we can have questions about an amphitheater. A lot of people can argue, "Well, if you come in for a concert, you know, will those tax dollars be staying here in Longview?" But we look at a capital investment or a capital improvement in that area that would generate others. So, we know hotels would follow. We know restaurants would follow. So, then those tax dollars not only will then begin to generate, but stay here as well. And so, what I'm fighting for, and what I believe in this project about, is our city saying, "Hey, we're taking the CIP, and we're going to put it in South Longview, where it's never been before." And we're putting it in an area that definitely deserves it.
And I've looked over the CIP budget. Do y'all know what the CIP budget is this year? Anybody know? Nobody knows?
I know.
Well, I know, but I'm not going to go through it. I've got it all in my paperwork here. Now, I got a question for you, Mr. Rowland. How did we get so much money in excess of the CIP budget? You know where I'm going with this, so you might as well go ahead and say it.
It's actually through...
It's the ARCA funds.
No, sir, that is not...
Well, you're using the ARCA funds to pay for some of those capital improvement projects like Avenue B and some of the other... like Avenue B and some of the other drainage issues and stuff like we've got like that. And we've had this discussion before, where those monies that were based in that budget year, we're taking those monies and we're taking them out and putting them in the reserve funds. That's where we're getting the buildup at. We've got $17 million or, I don't know if we've got our May, May deal from this year yet or not. We've got eight and a half last year. That's what started building up our reserves real quick. And plus the value of the property values that are coming in this year and everything else. Now, this is a want. This is not a need. We've got a lot of needs, and you know where I'm going again with this. I need radios. I need parity for my policeman fireman. You keep saying it's in the budget, it's not in the budget. We're working on the budget. We're looking at it. Well, that's fine, but all of a sudden, we can come up with $12 million at the drop of a hat within two weeks to find this money. Now, I'm not opposed to it going to the south side of town. I don't care if it goes to the middle of town, the east side, west side, north side, it doesn't make any difference. But I see the other needs that I keep getting told about and looking into, that, you know, we can't find $3 million for radios, or we're gonna spread that out over three years. But then I've got, according to you, $12 million sitting in the bank. Why can't we get those radios? You say, well, we need to buy a third this year, a third next year, and a third, a third the next year. I don't understand why, because what we got now is obsolete and they can't get parts for it and we can't buy new ones. So that's one of the wants. That's one of the needs. We need, not a want. So that's one of the things I want to sit down and discuss, where we can spend this money at and not just jump into it and spend it on amphitheaters.
We sit here on this council, year after year, and we see the city find money to spend on every project that comes through. And I don't wanna sit here and name all the projects, but we all are aware of them. And we sit here and we justify how those funds go there. And I'm taking it a little personal because this is something for South Longview. When has this council ever stood up and said, $12 million can go towards an investment in South Longview? We all know what Interstate 20 needs to be done. We all see that that development benefits the entire city. And we ignore it year after year while we find reasons to spend money everywhere else in the city. You know, and I think that should be the argument, more so than anything, whether it's an amphitheater, whether it's anything, we always find a reason to ignore that when it comes to that.
The reason I was asking about CIP, and I wasn't trying to put you by the spot. Our CIP budget is, you know, two to $3 million a year. That's what we're spending on CIP. But our list of projects is enormous. The transportation CIP alone is $55 million. We don't do it all. Of course, we do parts of it every year. But as I look down the, the projects from municipal facilities to the drainage, to parks and rec, to transportation, all of these things are all valid projects that we will eventually get to or do, or do when we can. I'm not discrediting any of them. What I'm trying to justify is, will any project on this list accomplish what an amphitheater would accomplish for South Longview, for Longview, not South Longview? Would any of these projects make an impact upon our community that the value of the development of I-20 and the development of a facility for young people and old people and for restaurants and retail and property taxes and the things that would go into this? Would any of these equal that? And I've looked it over, and I don't see anything that equals the potential investment of this project, which is here at this one point in time. We have one opportunity here and now, and then this will go away. I mean, that, that, that project will go away. These aren't going away. They're gonna be with us, and we need to decide, where do we feel it's better to spend it? I'm not going to sit here and say, I think we should spend it all in one place here or all in one place there. I'm saying, let's see what the potential is, and then we gotta continue to make decisions to move forward. Or stop the discussion and we move on to something else.
Andy, I, I'm all in agreement with moving forward. I, as well as Ray, I know the energy is directed toward us. This is South Longview. We definitely need something. We need that anchor. We need that, that catalyst that's gonna move us forward. It is my hope and prayer that should we decide to do this, that there will be other development opportunities. You know, it's something that we can wish for. We don't know if it's gonna happen, but we pray and hope that should we move forward with this, then that, that will cause other businesses to come. I, I too, Ray, am in that fight, have been for a long time with trying to get a major development in South Longview, especially along that corridor. You know, when I was younger, that used to be, I mean, Andy, you know as well as I did, Interstate 20 and High Street was major.
That was it.
I would love to be able to see that happen again and us move in that direction, but we have to make sure we're making the, the right movement.
Absolutely. I agree with, I agree with that, 100%. Comments?
I'd just like to echo our fellow councilmen that I'm excited for this development, to hear more about, about it. And so I think that to continue to have more discussion on it, I think is part of our fiduciary responsibility. But I'm looking forward to hearing more details about this project as well.
Yeah, I guess that's my question. How do we get those additional details? What's the right avenue? Tim's raising his hand. God, hold on, just a second. I mean, how, how do we get those additional details that people are asking about? Because I think, I think the answer is, okay, we have $12 million. So one, do we spend it here? Do we spend it other places? I think that's a conversation that we all need to have at some point in time that we're not ready to totally have tonight. But in order to prepare for that conversation, I do have additional questions just about how ownership, funding, you know, if they do go defunct, you know, what are, what are the answers to those questions? And I don't know how we get those.
We, we, we will get those. But there was no point in getting any of those until we knew whether we could even have the $12 million.
Yeah.
Because if we didn't have $12 million, this discussion ended tonight. Because we can't snap our fingers and come up with it. So if we didn't, that's, all this was for tonight was, do we have it and can we spend it? It's not, we have it, we're gonna spend it, it's, or we don't have it. That's all this was for, is do we have it? Is it available? And if so, then where do we go from here? That's all it was for. And the question's been answered, that we have it, now that, now we proceed forward because there's a, there's a lot of layers to this onion, and we have to peel each one of them back. But until we came up with this answer that we know we could, there's no point in going forward and no point in having additional discussion. Mr. Carpenter, I'm sorry, you raised your hand. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor, thank you. I had initially raised issues with Rollin and Marion back in 31st of May. And three things are just glaring to me, and that is, whereas we all individually represent a district within our city, we also represent the entire city. And I don't like to see us getting clouded in and down on whose district it's for. Is this good for Longview? That's the fundamental question. I raised issues more about, Dr. Mack, about the nuts and bolts and the questions of ownership and the things that Ms. Usher Carter just mentioned. And I really don't think, quite honestly, they, I mean, Rollin and Marion have done a nice job trying to get some answers to these questions, but, you know, I just, I just see too many, too many of the things that are gonna end up in Jim Finley's office to get dealt with. Because I know in all of the years that I've borrowed money, I've never been able to borrow money on somebody else's property in my name. And I just don't see, I raised that issue, and I've raised the issues. If Leslie then built sideways, then, you know, we're gonna inherit a building that we, quite frankly, don't have the budget to take care of. And it's not that I'm coming out as a say here, I just want to make absolutely sure, Doctor, that we're making a decision, and that we're gonna know what we want, or what we need, and do we have all of the parts and pieces of this puzzle in front of us so we as a council can make an intelligent decision? And, and quite frankly, it affects us as the current council, but this goes many, many years beyond anybody sitting in this room. So that's the point I wanted to make, that there's some issues that we need to get addressed by the developer in conjunction with the city attorney's office. Anyway, that's, that's what I'm saying. I'm not there, not there. I just want more black and white documentation so that we make the right decision as a council. Thank you.
Okay, well, that makes sense. You just wanted us to get to point A so we could say, yes, we'd like to go to point B.
You can't go to point C if you don't get past point A. I mean, it's only, you gotta go a hurdle at a time in a race, ladies and gentlemen. And if we don't get over the first hurdle, we don't need to go to the second or third hurdle. And tonight was the first hurdle. We just need to see, is it, is it something we can proceed to continue to look into? If you thought decisions were gonna be made tonight, that's why it says discussion. It didn't say action. There's no action being taken. It's a discussion item. We're gonna see if we had the money. And now we go on to whatever the next step is that we need to take to see if this will or will not pan out. Because you all realize, don't you? Surely, we all realize, we're only one piece of this puzzle, of the financing of this, this thing. We, but we are the first one that counts. If our, if we don't have the ability to participate in this amphitheater, nothing below us will even be discussed. If we do have the ability to participate in this amphitheater, we proceed to go forward with that, it still doesn't mean there's gonna be an amphitheater. Then they have to go to their next hurdle, which doesn't include us any longer. But if we're not in the game, there is no game. And if we couldn't get over the first hurdle, the race is over with. Is that, I mean, I don't know how to make it any clearer than that, simple as can be. So that's where we are now. We know that we have the ability to do it if we so chose, but now it's time to start peeling the onion back and seeing what else is there that we need to be aware of. So when you have questions or concerns, bring those forward and let's get those answered. Let's answer questions, let's answer concerns, and let's see where we, what our next hurdle is. Because there's gonna be multiple hurdles in this deal. It's not just a one-time, gee, we have $12 million, let's write a check and move on to the next project. It doesn't work like that. Even if we decided to write a check, which we wouldn't do for two and a half years or two years from now, because that's not until it's completed, if the people below us can't come with their funding, it still is a no-go, even if we were ready to do it. So that's all we are. That's all we are here right now for that. Any other questions or concerns about that portion, this portion?
Well, this is the first time we've had a discussion on this. We've just been presented with a presentation, then you charge the city manager, and now we're talking about it. There's nothing on there about a vote. I'm just telling you what I've been told, and had nothing to do with South Longview, Ray, don't, don't bring that into it, because you heard me say all that. I said, I don't care whether it's north, south, east or west. It's what we can afford to do and what we need versus what we want. And that's what I've been looking into, and that's what a lot of people have, and I've discussed this with Rollin. We, this is a discussion, so, you know, going to the next step. Rollin's told me that the $35 million isn't feasible. He came up with 44. Okay, where are we at here? You know?
Every time it's come up since, until now, when we've been presented with an option, listen carefully, everyone, our portion of the cash payment is $12 million regardless of what the cost of the amphitheater is. If it's 20 million, if it's 40 million, if it's 100 million, we still put in 12. And we don't put in 12 until the amphitheater is completed, paid for, certificate of occupancy, and ready to roll. That's the facts that we have, and they stated that when they made the presentation. Jim stated that very clearly.
And it's not the city's obligation to operate.
Zero.
Or run it. So there's no other capital investment.
It's a one-time payment of cash.
From the city on that. And the other point that I have to keep reiterating is, the years I've been on this council, we sit here, year after year, vote after vote, we find money, and I mean, we find money. And we can name the projects, we all can name them, in every district except District Two and District Three. And we all sit here and see this council spends millions of dollars on everything, and some of them fail. Some of them are huge flops, and we all sit here and watch it. But, you know, this is one thing that we've seen, this Interstate 20, if you go from Terrell to Shreveport, everything is developed along Interstate 20. Everything. And, you know, it would be move me to not think that, well, because Interstate 20 runs through South Longview is the reason why it's not being developed. That's the discussion. Because we see the money, we see the money go out. We see the money, we see the money go out every year. Every year I'm here, every budget cycle, we see the money being spent in this city constantly.
We're gonna, we're gonna have the courtroom, we're gonna talk one at a time. And, and I understand everyone's points. But I wanna make one point really clear. Ladies and gentlemen, counsel, you can continue to say the same thing over and over again that is not true, and it's never gonna make it true. They have sat here and told us, we have a $12 million obligation. It doesn't matter what the cost of the amphitheater is, our obligation is still $12 million. You can say that's not the case as many times as you want to, but that's never gonna make it true according to the presentation that we were given. And if that presentation were to change, we would not be involved in this discussion. Because that's the only way we could afford this amphitheater, if we could afford it anyway, is to have a one-time payment with no obligations for maintenance operation, and that's why we're sitting here discussing it now. But you can keep saying that in the public if you want to. You can keep saying if it goes to 35 million, what are we gonna do? Because I won't participate in something.
I don't think he wants misunderstanding that. No one's misunderstanding.
It seems to be misunderstood.
No one's misunderstanding that. No one. I mean, it's, it's clear to everyone else that it's a development in South Longview.
And you know, Councilman Wade, I, I would hate to think that, seriously, it is our time. It's, it's time for South Longview to have something major. And, and as you said, for years and years, we have sat and watched things, or people come up with the monies that's needed for other projects. It is our time. But we do have a responsibility as well to make sure that, I mean, it's been laid out. If 12 million is all we're spending and we're getting a $35 million project set in our lap, it seems like a no-brainer when you, you put it in those terms. As long as there's no underlining.
But we're gonna peel that onion back and make sure.
Layer at a time.
Now we start the next step. I don't, Tim, I'll see you in just a second. Now we start the next step of our investigation on where this goes if it were to proceed.
And that's where we are tonight. We're just making that next step.
Correct.
And it'd also be great to see how many capital improvement projects have happened in the city of Longview, everywhere else where they've spent millions and millions of dollars, and those projects have either, A, not generated the tax benefits, or generated whatever it was projected to generate that this city has spent money on over the years.
Mr. Carpenter, I didn't mean to ignore you.
Hold on, they got turned by. I think the logical step here, Doc, would be to, for each of us to put together a specific list. And then if you would kindly invite Jim Leslie and his group back so that we can get some more clarity. I'm still, I'm still hung up on the thing being the city's name with them having money borrowed against the property. And I just can't seem to get comfortable with that scenario because if there is a lien on that piece of property that is in our name and they default, it will be foreclosed. And I just don't, you know, I wanna see that piece of the puzzle for sure. I think it'd be wise to have them back and for us to, you know, to continue to digest some of these issues.
Agree. I think that's a logical course of action, and I'm sure these developers will answer any question that we might have. They're not afraid of their project. And, you know, we don't know what their financing is or how they're structured, and it's really, it's really, that's their business. But they'll have to answer our questions, make sure we're comfortable, before we proceed to the third hurdle. Because there's lots of hurdles to get over here. So let's, don't get too hung up yet or, or too excited or too disappointed. We're just taking it one step at a time in a logical fashion, and I think that's how we need to proceed. So why don't you all get lists of concerns, questions? We'll get them all together. And then we'll, we'll reconvene, whether it be at a council meeting or whether it be in a, in a work session. Work sessions, I've, I'm not a big fan of them because... Work sessions, I've, I'm not a big fan of them because it's hard to get seven people and staff together at the same time. And if one person is not there, then it defeats the purpose of the work session.
We've never had work sessions.
We've never, I, when I, when I was on council.
We've never had work sessions before.
Not since I've been the mayor. But when I was on council, umpteen years ago, we had a lot of them, and it was terrible because people wouldn't show up. Not everybody could attend. We get together and we work. So.
Actually, a work session is, after this, you have questions. Mr. Mcfee is here. His whole staff is here. You make these phone calls during the day, during the week. You discuss with them what's happening. And by the time we get here, you understand what's going on, and you make those comments, and you make those votes based on the research you've already done. That's the individual work session of everyone on this council, is to do that. Mr. Mcfee is always available. His staff is all, I call them with everything all the time. You do the homework and you do the work before you get here. You don't wait till you get here to try to find the answers. The answers are already found before you get here.
And, and, you know, Tim, we got your, all of the list of your questions and concerns that were answered, which it was nice to see those. I mean, it's, I want to see what your concerns and questions are, and I think they did a good job of answering them. Whether you feel like the answers were adequate or not, I don't know, but that's what you do. Come up with your questions, get them to us. Get, not to me. Don't get them to me because I'm not answering questions. I'm just one person up here.
Know that we will not own it, so that he understands.
We will not own it for the financing. We will own it.
We'll own the building eventually.
Yes, but it will not be foreclosed.
No, no, we're not going to have any financial responsibility of that building because we can't.
That's the clear.
We cannot. And if that was, if that's part of their deal, then once again, the deal won't go through because we cannot own that building with a liability to it. We don't have that. And, but that's not been presented to me like that in any stretch, form, or fashion.
I haven't questioned any of that. You keep going on and on about that. I'm questioning things that we need to do. It has nothing to do with the South Side or my district or any of them. It's things that I see the need that we need to do, and all of a sudden, within two weeks, we find 12 million dollars. That's fine. If we've got 20 million dollars or we've got 15 million dollars, I don't care where we spend it at. We just have needs versus wants, and that's what I keep going on. And you keep saying that I'm against, I'm not against this. Let me tell you, it's, it's probably a good financial deal, but at the same time, I feel the responsibility to my firemen and my policemen, men and women, and all the other people that, we lost four firemen in the last few weeks. We've lost three policemen or four, vice versa, one of the way, the other, and they all left basically because of salaries or they went to something more lucrative to do. We can't keep up with Tyler. I've got the list right here that shows our firemen make less money, our firemen paramedics, than Tyler firemen do. That's my concern because those people directly impact us daily, daily. And if we can't keep them, and if we train them, and they go to the Metroplex, or they go to Tyler, wherever they go, we need to pay them more money.
Mr. Pirtle, with all due respect.
No, 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 let me finish. Let me finish because I've listened to you bash about not the South, not the South. It has nothing about the South, sir. It has nothing about the South. I'm talking. Now, I visited with Roland. I visited with him numerous times, and I've given him a list. He's got that list. And we can't do this. We don't have the money. Or we're working on it in the budget, or we're working on this in the budget. But then within two weeks, we find 12 million dollars that we knew we had because we got 17 million from the COVID. And I know how that money's been moved around and rearranged, and that's great. We use it where we can. But at the same time, I've got people that I need to keep here that directly impact daily when I hear that ambulance run. And I hate to know that I'm not paying those men and women what they need to be paid. And the thing is, well, we're going to, we've got to make it in the budget because it's going to be a yearly deal, a yearly deal. Well, that's great, but this is, we found this right quick, and this is where I'm having a problem. I have no problem with the project because I think it's a good deal. I know the people involved with it very, very personally, and I trust them explicitly a lot more than you ever will know. And I can tell you that I'm behind this because I've visited with them in the past on this, and I'm behind this. My biggest concern was the finances. But now we found the money, and that's great. But what are we going to do with the other needs we have? Not the wants, but the needs. That's my biggest concern. It has nothing to do with the demographics of this town or wherever it's at in this town. It could be north, or it could be in Kristen District, or it could be in Michelle's District. I don't care. It's going to be the same thing for me. So if it's on the South Side, the South Side's already growing on that side of the interstate. They're building Wendy's, McDonald's. All that stuff's going out there, and that's helping everything. And it's coming back in. And I've seen this list. I know the people that own that property. And I can tell you, the people that are investing in this or behind this have no, no responsibility of any of that property out there. So that's a big plus to me. And I want to find this for them people. But at the same time, I want to make sure that the 13,000 people that I represent are taken care of. And they've got to be taken care of by me keeping my public safety in, in tow and intact. We're 20, I've been told, we're 20 policemen down, and I don't know how many firemen. That's my biggest concern. It's not where we've got the money or don't have the money. We do have the money. We've got 17 million dollars in COVID funds or ARPA funds that we're spending on a lot of different things, and that's great. But at the same time, I want to make sure that those people get what they need to get here to stay here once we train them and, and they've got tenure here. I want that. So that's my deal.
One's not going to get done at the neglect of the other. All right, you're arguing, you're arguing two different things. You're arguing apples and oranges. No one's ever going to neglect that. Our public safety is number one and important to everyone. And so no one's ever sitting here saying, let's take money from public safety to, to build an amphitheater. And I don't think anyone up here would agree with that.
Okay, first off, and, and, gentlemen, ladies, okay, we all put public safety first. It's the biggest part of our budget. It always has been and it always will be. So it's not just yours, Steve. It's everybody's firemen and policemen.
I didn't say that.
You said my three or four times. You said my firemen, my policemen. It's all of ours. It's the city of Longview.
And you can, you can mix the words if you want to.
I'm not mixing. I'm just saying, we all.
All seven of them are responsible for that budget, for those people.
And we all will put them first always. We'll never take money from them.
When we start losing them, we've got to figure out why we're losing them.
Yes, we do. Okay, just one second. But understand something, Mr. Pirtle. Once again, we, we cannot justify spending one-time money on a recurring salary expense that will handcuff us next year. That would be the most poor budget decision in the world. So, and we didn't just find this 12 million dollars the last two weeks. We just identified it to you all where it is. The money's been there. We, you don't know how much money's in our fund account every year until Roland makes the budget presentation every year. We didn't just find it. He just pointed out where it is and what it can be used for. We didn't just all of a sudden snap our finger and say, we just hit a pot of gold and found 12 million dollars. That is not what we did. We just identified it. It's been there. And, and understand something, everyone. We cannot use COVID or ARPA funds for something like an amphitheater. It's illegal. You cannot do it. Now, if you use ARPA funds for other things that give you savings elsewhere, you put your savings into a savings account. That's what the reserve fund is. It's our city's savings account. There's nothing illegal about that or hiding or shading. You have to do something with money that you divert from one account to another if you have something that's able to pay that account. That's only, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but is that the way we budget? Wrong?
Well, that's what I said the last, the last, the meeting before last. That's exactly what we said when we had that presentation and me and Tim brought up about the ARPA funds. That's what, that's exactly what I said, and Kristen even said, so Roland, and Roland knew what we were talking about. We're just moving money that we can use for one thing into this fund over here for another thing. Now, we can use our reserve funds, whatever we need to use it for or what we want to use it for. My biggest concern is public safety right now, that we're losing that money and those people now.
That needs to be discussed.
We found 17 million dollars. We didn't find it. It was given to us. We applied for it. We, we granted it. Now, how do we use it? You know, we're, we're building up our reserve account. Bing, bing, bing. We keep going up and up and up with it. Every time we use the ARPA funds, we go into the reserve account. That's great. Can we use, use the reserve to do some of this stuff? I don't know.
We have, just as Mr. Mcfee pointed out, we have two to four million dollars in excess this year from other surpluses that we've had. Sales tax revenues are up. Hiring that we haven't replaced has, has added that. We also have taken into account that, you know, the gap will be going online in July, I believe it is. And our projections from the gap is that we'll receive approximately 1.8 million dollars a year in revenues from the gap if it goes as planned, that we do not have now, that will be in our, at our discretion as well, that goes into our savings account, that we can apply wherever we so see fit. That is a recurring expense, I mean, a recurring fund, because unless the gap closes down, we should continue to receive revenues from the gap on a yearly basis. Now, what those revenues are is still to be seen. We can project all we want, but we won't know that until Angela gives us a figure and tells us this is how much money we receive from the gap. But those are also things that we will be able to utilize as we move forward in this. But once again, let me explain something to you again. If we decided to build this amphitheater tomorrow, which we're not, I mean, please, people, it's two years from the time they start work before we're going to be required to come up with any money if it's at its completion. Two years. So that's two years away from where we are if we started today. Our budgeting and our funding have done very well lately. I think our economy is doing very well. Our sales tax revenues are up. We're doing good. So we're going to have some revenues available. Where we spend them are up to us. But we have to be careful not to spend one-time money on a recurring expense. We will handcuff ourselves. We'll be scrambling from that point on. So I think we beat this dead horse. We've rid it to the ground. Let's move on unless you, Mr. Carpenter, is that your hand up or just resting your chin?
I have one quick question. Down the same path to Roland. In the 2122 budget that we're currently in, we have three months left, correct?
Yes, sir.
What is this 60% increase of fuel doing to that budget?
So those, if you, if you remember looking at the, the memo that I had written, the additional notes I had about the upcoming budget cycle, I said, we anticipate increased revenue, such as the sales tax mentioned by Mayor Mack about the gap, but also the increased expense. I've got, we do have inflationary concerns. We've got supply chain issues, which, which I think will going to diminish a large portion of that increased revenue. But it's premature of me to tell you by how much at this time because we just finished completion of the year-end estimates, the requested budgets, and our budget hearings are about to take place. So it's really, it's really too premature to tell you how much of that's going to be eaten up. I will note that I referenced in that memo that staff recruitment, competitive pay, retention of employees, the concerns that Mr. Pirtle's brought out, that's imperative to continue providing that same level of service. And, and, and I mentioned that as well. So I don't, I didn't answer your question.
You don't see a problem with 2122 budget getting to October? The current year, the current budget that we're under?
No, sir.
We're expecting similar.
Yes, we're expecting two to four million dollars that would go to reserves at this time.
Even if you spend the additional fuel?
Yes, we were able to absorb that within our existing. We were able to absorb that within our existing funds. Yes, sir.
Mrs. Harra.
Am I understanding correctly that you are actively working on the things that Steve has brought up tonight for that budget?
Yes, ma'am. That's.
Right. So there's no reason that we can't do all of the wonderful things that we're talking about. They're, right? I mean, that's, we're not necessarily deciding one over the other. You are working on those things.
No, I, and I referenced it in the last meeting, and I apologize if I wasn't clear. One, one of the things that I think's incumbent upon the city manager is to present a budget to the city council that is sustainable. Reserve funds normally are not part of the budgeting process. At times, they've been used in the past during hard times and economic issues. That has been used, but that's been pretty brought forward. But the reserve fund has kind of been growing. If you look back on, on our information, that reserve fund's been growing since about '17. Now, there's been a little blip here and there that we've used money, but that, that's, that, that reserve fund's been growing. But that's not what you guys hire me to do, which is why you guys, you guys are the ones that control where that excess funds get spent.
And I was. Let's see, my list, my list came out two months ago that I gave to Roland, that I've got right here in this package. I gave him a list of about nine, eight or nine things that I wanted, and those were on there. This didn't just pop up since this popped up. This has been going on and on and on for a few months now.
Yes, we've seen the list. I've seen the list of every one of y'all's desires for your, for your districts. I've seen those lists.
Nothing to do with my district.
I've seen those as well.
I hadn't had anything from my district.
Well, okay.
No, no, I haven't asked for anything in my district. I got what I wanted on the 2018 bond, and I've pushed for everybody else's district.
I've got all of y'all's budget concerns from each council member, from each district. I have your budget concerns, each one of you all relayed to Mr. Mcfee at my request. I asked him to meet with each one of y'all, find out what your budget concerns were, and I have a list of every single one of them. And every one of them will be addressed. Will everyone be accomplished? I hate to tell you, council, no, they will not. We don't have that pot of gold under the rainbow. But we'll do as much as we can, as we can. That's our, that's our job as, as budgetary constraints that we have, that we have to deal with. So I say we move on from here. We know where we are. Send in your questions and concerns, and let's see where this leads us before our next meeting. Okay? Very good. We will now go to consent agenda. Are there any items council would like pulled off for separate discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, hold on. I need to raise a hand.
Okay.
Ms. Ishihara is a motion?
I move to approve. I second.
Ms. Snoddy seconds. All in favor?
All right.
Show of hands, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're not to zoning. Public hearing to consider applications Z 22-15. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of the council. Mr. Mcfee, the applicant is requesting a rezone from General Retail to Light Commercial Zoning District located in 1901 and 1905 Northwest Loop 281. The applicant is proposing a billiard hall at this location. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with adjacent zoning. Therefore, this request does not constitute spot zoning. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require public hearing, which is now open. Any question? Ms. Choi. I do have Mr. Jeff Goodman available for questions, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, any questions? Any concerns? The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion? Please raise your hand.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Pirtle, make a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Ishihara seconds it. All in favor? Please raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing, consider application Z 22-16. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a rezone from General Retail to Single Family Zoning District located at 1011 Sapphire Street. Currently, there is a single-family home on the property, and the owner would like to bring the property into compliance with current zoning requirements and build in addition to the existing house. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our comprehensive plan and adjacent zoning. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any question? Ms. Choi. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion? Mr. Wade, motion. Ms. Snoddy seconds. All in favor? Raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing to consider application P 22-01. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a rezone from General Retail to Plan Development for a senior cottage development at an existing senior living community located at 601 and 603 Hollybrook Drive. The applicant is proposing 15 duplex cottages, all on one lot that would serve seniors and will have a private access drive from the existing development to the west. The property is currently going through the subdivision process. As stated before, the subj, all the structures will be on the same property, and will have a minimum setback of 20 feet from the back of the curb, 10 feet from the rear. Minimum building size, 3,500 square feet, two and a half stories max, within a minimum of two parking spaces per unit. The site will have internal sidewalks and plans to connect to the Longview Trail system to the southeast. Signage will follow the Monument sign regulations set forth in the UDC. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any question? Ms. Choi. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion? Ms. Ishihara, motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Gimbowa seconds it. All in favor? Show of hands. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Any other items of committee interest? We'll start with Mr. Carpenter.
Well, thank you, Mayor. There's just a few points here that I'd like to share with the council and the city. The, the first thing, bring the slide. There we go. The Gregton Food and Petri is still underway. We're going to go right through the summer. We found that there is a need for food for families first and fourth Thursday of every month. Next. Pine Tree Summer School kicked off on the 6th. The Summer Food Plan kicked off on. on June 6th. That's also very important, is we're trying to make sure that no child is without food for the summer. We've got the Athletic Fast Camp beginning on June 6th, it's about seven weeks long. They're taking pride in reaching a potential high school band, had some really remarkable band state results. A high school student completed the Eagle Scout project somewhere to the box that we have in front of the police station. We now have a box that's, over retired American flags over on Pine Tree campus on Pine Tree Road. And I think that's pretty much the thing. I appreciate all of the staff people being able to get this set up for me, Dr. Mack, that I could participate tonight, and look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snotty.
Hello again, everyone. Juneteenth activities coming up, June 18th. We will have the Juneteenth parade, starting at 10:00 a.m. on June 18th. Activities to follow will be at Stafford Park, as well as Teague. We will also have, let's see, Spider Pig will be, the hot air balloon will be at the Foster Middle School for the parade lineup, so, guys, we look forward to each of you coming out and supporting that. Thank you.
What is a spider pig?
I looked at that, it's part Spider-Man, it's part pig, Spider Pig. Andy, we have to know these things, we're grandparents now, so.
I know, I mean, she'll be asking for it. What is a spider pig?
Mr. Wade.
Sure, I have some things tonight, everyone. First off, in continuing the celebration of Juneteenth, and I encourage everyone to go out and support the parade and the events that Councilman Snotty just mentioned, but there's also a jazz night on Friday, June 17th, featuring Mac Geis at Longview Community Center, 500 East Whaley Street. And each year, with my stipend that I receive from the city, I donate it back to students and/or community, and this year, I was able to take part in Longview Lobo Basketball Camp with Coach Newton and Coach Leggett, men's, the women's head basketball coach and the men's head basketball coach. And it was a great group of kids there, felt very honored to be a part of it. I want to thank the Lobo Basketball, men's, girls', and boys' basketball program for having me out. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Ms. Ishihara?
Wait, I got one last thing.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry. I know, I normally don't have this much, so I apologize. But also, too, there's athletic camps available this summer through Longview Independent School District. See, see the schedule and sign up at www.lisd.org. And summer nutrition program through LISD, the breakfast and lunch at selected schools through August, and it's free to all children 18 and under, it's a great thing that LISD does. And also, which is always great, because we love our instructors and our teachers, but salary increases for LISD district teachers and staff. Good for them.
Good for them.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ishihara.
Nothing for me.
Ms. Gamboa.
Yes, well, hello, Mayor, council, ladies and gentlemen, I'm so honored to be here for one of my first meetings, and this week, I had the pleasure of having council orientation. I forgot to give Richard Yegley a picture, because I'm still getting used to this whole slideshow thing, so I apologize, but thank you to all the directors, to Chief Boone, Chief Steelman, everyone, for really teaching me so much about our city. I'm enjoying it and continue, I will enjoy to continue learning. Go Panthers! Everyone in Spring Hill is doing great in athletics, especially the boys' baseball team. The 2022 Spring Hill Panthers scored big, winning district titles for the first time. They were able to go to the fifth round, so way to go, baseball, as well as softball. Spring Hill freshman, Jovi Spurlock, being newcomer of the year. And thank you to everyone for also participating in the Longview Community Ministries, Too Hot to Cook this week, and Eating Out Your Family on Tuesdays, and that is it for me.
Mr. Pirtle.
Nothing for me.
Mr. McPhee.
Nothing.
Well, Juneteenth holiday, city office will be closed for Juneteenth holiday on Monday, June 20th. Sanitation and recycling collection will run on a regular schedule on Mondays and throughout the week. The downtown Longview Wine Swirl, tickets are on sale now for downtown Longview's Wine Swirl, which will be held from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Saturday, June 11th. I feel like I'd use that right now.